Well, good evening. Calling the committee meeting for Housing, Health and Public Safety. I have a few things on the calendar this evening. Just real quick, I'll read off the agenda. We have a discussion of the Norwood Housing Action Plan. And I'm going to move the agenda. Number two will be the discussion of individuals using Quality Inn as an encampment. Then we'll do permeable surfaces and then discussion of some issues with Xavier Student Housing. And finally, request to address the committee. So, the first is the Norwood, discussion of the Norwood Housing Action Plan, which was discussed in a council meeting and when we gathered last time, which was not an official meeting because we didn't have enough folks. But we do need to officially do something with this so we can have the city accept it. So, what this is, is an action plan. It is not hold us to do anything specifically, but it has research and data that would be crucial for us to go out and seek other funding sources and things like that. So what we want to do is ask that the council accept it, that the city accept it, and then we can have it as record. So again, it does not hold us to do anything. It's just a guideline. So if there are any questions about that, I know you might have questions about that, sir?
Well-
If you would, please just state your name for the record.
My name is Mike Wyble. I live at 2016 Mills. That's my address.
That's okay.
But I don't, I would, I need to look it up and do some research on the questions that I wanted to ask at this point.
Awesome. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
No.
Awesome. So can the committee recommend to council that we adopt this policy or this action plan?
Yes.
Yes, I recommended, great data, great recommendations to start the conversation.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. All right. And also, I did talk with the mayor and he will, once we've accepted it, he will make it accessible on the website. Want to let you know that. He didn't want to do that until it was officially accepted into, into the city. All right. The second item is an issue with individuals who have been using the Quality Inn as an encampment. So this was brought to my attention by a resident. I have spoken with Noah, who is the Service Safety Director, as well as Jim Shelby with the Health Department. I have been informed that it has been re-secured, but I would love for Mr. Flynn to speak a little bit about some of the services that you, your agency Strategies to End Homelessness offer. I think you have a really smart, thoughtful process and I would love for you to share that with us.
Sure.
So if you would come up, that would be fantastic. Thank you, sir.
So my name is Kevin Finn, F-I-N-N. I'm the president of Strategies to End Homelessness. We coordinate all services for the homeless in Hamilton County. I also live at 4020 Burwood, so I'm a Norwood resident as well. You want me to just sort of repeat what we talked about the other day?
That would be awesome. I'd appreciate that.
Okay. So we have four programs in Hamilton County that do street outreach, that go out and work with people who are living, the official term is places not meant for human habitation, which cracking into a building that doesn't have utilities on and that sort of thing would fall in that category, as would under a bridge, on a park bench, you know, sleeping in a car, all that kind of stuff. That's who the street outreach programs target. So there are four street outreach programs. One that targets people under the age of 25, that Lighthouse Use Services operates. The PATH team is a part of Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health. Their target is people who are mentally ill who are on the street. The Veterans Administration has street outreach programs. And then there's a fourth one that is actually operated by 3CDC, but they only target over the Rhine and the Central Business District of the City of Cincinnati, so that wouldn't apply in this case. But what we typically do is have the street, so none of those are my agency. My agency oversees the work of about 30 other nonprofits that all work in Hamilton County, the shelter operators and, and housing programs and that sort of thing. So the way street outreach normally works is a little bit of a carrot and stick approach between police and the outreach workers. A lot of times homeless encampments won't move if there isn't at least an implied threat that people will have to move. So it's normally the police who start delivering the message that, you know, you're going to have to move on at some point or something like that, and implying that the camp is going to be swept. And then at the same time, the street outreach workers go out and say, let's get you into a shelter, let's get you into a treatment program, maybe even directly into housing, that sort of thing. And a lot of times people who are sleeping unsheltered are willing to accept those kinds of offers if they think they're going to have to leave where they're camping anyway. But they won't consider those offers if they think they could stay where they are indefinitely. So that's the sort of carrot and stick approach. Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health's PATH team is by far the biggest street outreach program, so they're the one that, you know, is sort of the default. I reached out to them the first time that, that we spoke and they were actually aware already that there had been people sleeping in the building and had been working with them as recently as January 24th. But they had stopped going there in mid-February because they were under the impression that the people who had been sleeping in the building had moved on to somewhere else. When I notified them that there was reason to believe that there were still people there, they said they were going to put it on the sort of route of places they regularly check out again and that they, so they're still checking it out now. But if the building has been re-secured and the people didn't find another way back in, then it's entirely possible that there isn't anybody sleeping in there right now. I tried to get an update from the head of the program today, but wasn't able to reach her, so I don't really know anything more recent than that. Questions? Or anything about that that's not clear?
You said 3CDC was for OTR and downtown?
Yeah, the Central Business District of downtown Cincinnati.
Central Business, okay.
So, you know, and since the PATH team is sort of the biggest and you can't just tell if somebody is mentally ill, they typically will take a month or two to work with somebody to try to figure out if they're mentally ill. A lot of times during that month or two, they'll manage to help them, even if they don't have a mental health diagnosis. But, you know, at a certain point, if there isn't any reason to believe the person is mentally ill, they'll stop pursuing them, but that's typically down the road. You know, whereas whether or not somebody's a service-eligible veteran is a little more clear-cut, as is are they under the age of 25 for Lighthouses program. So because the PATH team has that sort of broader criteria, that is not so easily nailed down, and because they're the biggest, I believe they have eight full-time street outreach workers. They're typically the one that we would end up having come in for something like this. I do think it's worth noting, I don't know if you all will find this interesting or not, there's an app for everything. So my organization has an app called Street Reach that is available both, in both formats, that if people see a homeless camp or see somebody sleeping unsheltered, they can use the GPS in their phone to report the location. That information comes into our office. We share it with the street outreach workers. The app does ask whoever's submitting the report some general questions such as, how old do you think this person is, so that we know if they would be appropriate for Lighthouses Outreach Program and that sort of thing. So there is a, an app for reporting homeless encampments that is probably the fastest way to get the street outreach workers sort of dispatched to, to check on something. And that we use here in Hamilton County and in northern Kentucky, and it's the only one like it in the country that I know of, so anyway.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what's kind of the typical communication that happens? If it's, someone calls the police, like would the police notify you guys? Or what would you recommend? I mean, I love the app. I think that is something that should definitely be shared and, but say a resident does see someone, what can we do as a city to say, hey, these are the resources that are out there, please notify, you know?
Well, you know, my organization, the closest we come to doing direct services, we run something called the Central Access Point, which is a hotline that people can call to find out about what shelters are available and that sort of thing. So when people, whether people call CAP, which is what we call it for short, whether they call CAP or submit a report through the Street Reach app, it comes into the CAP office and then we share it with the street outreach programs. And it happens that fast, but you know, someone could just as easily pick up the phone and call the CAP line to report a homeless camp. How, you know, it really depends on where the camp is, like, you know, since the, there's a lot of camps in like District One of the City of Cincinnati. So like, they know exactly what to do when, when there's a camp in their area, they know exactly how to report it because they deal with so many of them. But it wouldn't surprise me if, you know, Norwood Police had, you know, had no idea what the CAP line is, much less what the app is. So in some geographies, it's very well-understood and known how to handle that and in others it isn't.
So the first, so if someone were to see someone experiencing homelessness, the first option would be either the app, call CAP. Would it also be calling the police? That feels a little more-
Well, you know, again, if, if the local police aren't familiar with, you know, this dynamic of sort of carrot and stick approach, and I'm a former street outreach worker myself, so I mean, all the way back in the late 90s, I was doing this in partnership with the police. You know, that works way better than, you know, for example, if, if you and I hadn't spoken and the police had just acted on it, what would have happened is the people might have been arrested or shooed off. But the outreach workers were already going there and trying to help them. So the outreach workers were trying to get them to go into shelters or treatment or housing programs. All of a sudden, the outreach workers don't know where they are. So you actually do people a disservice sometimes by just sweeping a camp because like today could be the day that we had an opening for one of those people in a housing program and if the police swept the camp yesterday, it might be weeks before we find that person again. So it's actually better to, for the police and outreach programs to sort of work together because then we don't lose the person, but we ultimately get the camp taken care of and, and dealt with. And, you know, I've been working with the homeless for 23 years. It might surprise you to hear that. I don't want anybody in a homeless camp because they're three times as likely to die sleeping on the street as they would be if they were a resident of one of our shelters and 10 times as likely to die on the street as someone like us who's not homeless. So, you know, the very first thing we try to do is get people off the street because it's just so much more dangerous for them. But we can't just lose them. If all we do is sweep the camp, we might actually just guarantee that they spend weeks more out on the street because the outreach workers don't even know where they are at that point.
With the cities or communities, specifically the police that you say maybe have a really good program where, you know, they work together, what do you see, like how did that happen? Is it a policy? Is it training the police have? Is it just a relationship that the outreach programs have with the department or how does that usually work?
Well, you know, with like District One and some of the areas that get the most homeless camps, I mean, there's a monthly meeting of the street outreach programs and other services that are targeted toward people sleeping unsheltered. It's called the Homeless Outreach Group, HOG, the third Wednesday of every month. I mean, like in District One, the police officers actually attend that meeting because they deal with so many homeless camps that it's worth their time to give, you know, an hour and a half once a month to be in a room with all the outreach workers. I don't think I'd recommend that for, you know, Norwood Police, given that you're probably not dealing with nearly as many camps. But, you know, that's sort of the all-in way is to like literally be at a table with the outreach workers every month. I think the, simply the understanding that going in and sweeping a camp immediately is not the best thing to do really for anybody involved and to have some understanding of how this carrot and stick approach is what works best and to look to, you know, execute on something like that when a homeless camp pops up is, is the best way to move forward. And I don't know if there's anybody you all would recommend I talk to with Norwood Police or anything like that to share the same information, but I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, it's possible that they already have this information and they know. Actually, I don't know. But certainly having the officers utilize CAP, at least know that those are resources, I think would be really, would be fantastic.
I think the default for law enforcement is they think that we'll just sweep the camp. And, you know, but what often happens is all of a sudden it's, you know, a quarter mile down the road, some other building that they crack into. So that's, it's not the best, it's a little bit whack-a-mole to just sweep the camp and think you're actually dealing with the situation. The best thing is to get people connected to services that'll get them to not be sleeping in a vacant building like that anymore.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to follow up with the chief or Ron to see where they see it the most. I mean, personally, like I've seen it the most is just typically like one or two people in a park in the woods. And that's, I mean, but they probably, you know, they're on the ground, they know where, I would say, the higher issues in Norwood with the homelessness is.
And it has been made worse in the, during the pandemic with all the sudden, sudden the shelters having to implement social distancing and things like that. Especially in 2020, we saw a decline in the number of people who the shelters were able to accommodate and therefore an increase in the number of people out on the street. In 2021, the numbers went a little bit more back to normal in terms of the shelters sort of figured out how to operate during a pandemic and got closer to their normal capacity. So the number of people in shelters went back up a little bit and the number of people on the street went back down about 10%. So it's not as bad, but it wouldn't surprise me at all if, you know, Norwood Police or anybody else said, man, the last couple of years during the pandemic, it seemed really bad. Well, it has. And those are Hamilton County numbers that I'm referring to. So it's gotten a little better. Hopefully we'll continue to get more people back into shelter this year.
Awesome. Thank you. So it seems like the two big takeaways are the services. And is the app called Street Reach?
Street Reach.
Okay.
It's available on both Apple and Android.
Sweet. And then I'm familiar with CAP. And then I will talk with the police, either Kramer or Murphy. And if they don't have that information, I'll absolutely connect you with them. They're great guys and-
Even if I didn't live in Norwood, I'd be happy to come meet with them. But I do live in Norwood, so I'd be happy to come meet with them.
Yeah, they're, they're wonderful. So I think they'd be very happy to have this information, again, if they don't already. So thank you.
Yeah, I don't know anybody in the police department, which is probably a good thing.
It's a good thing. It's a very good thing. Any other questions for Mr. Finn?
Wow, that's great.
No? Thank you. I so appreciate you coming.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about the gravel driveways?
He's gone.
Oh, no, I'm not going to say anything about that. I'd get myself in trouble if I-
Okay, fair enough. All right. Next on the list is the discussion of zoning for permeable surfaces. And this is when I'll ask Mr. Skelly to come and talk a little bit about, oops, Candace, I'll get this to you.
Good evening. So just before I begin, I was given both email and then a package this afternoon from the Statons, who I believe was the couple who appeared before council. Their property is 3850 Burwood Avenue. And at least, you know, I assume this discussion probably occurred before their application to the BZA, before my arrival, but, you know, probably for the last 10, 20 years, people are considering these things. The difficulty is that in most communities, the default design measure is either concrete or asphalt. So I think it's kind of percolating up reverse way in terms of becoming an issue or an item of concern is because there's more people interested in this approach, primarily because there's kind of like ecocentric sort of benefits in terms of allowing for reduced stormwater runoff, the infiltration, capture of, you know, the water for planting similar like a rain garden or a rain barrel. So there's definitely more interest in it. The problem is that, as I mentioned, our ordinance is almost identical to ones you see across country where it prohibits these things and more particularly with regards to this kind of loose gravel, stone, et cetera. So I think for myself as a land use planner, there probably is a compromise policy solution and it's something that was brought up yesterday at the city's Planning Commission meeting for discussion. I was tasked to look into it and, you know, hopefully draft something up and then bring it back to the next April Planning Commission meeting for discussion. So it's definitely on staff's radar. It definitely appears to be, a few people are aware of it. Obviously, the mayor, being on the Planning Commission, is aware of it. So at this point, you know, I'm happy to kind of take additional guidance from you guys to help me in drafting it. Primarily related to residential and housing type thing. I suspect it could become more popular just because of, again, more interest in, in stormwater management, trying to avoid heat islands, et cetera, so.
With the cons, if you were to develop a new, new policy or just change the current one, would it, would you think it would be important to require specific maintenance for the different materials they use for a porous or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so definitely permeable paving, which could be in the more high-end, the Cadillac type would be concrete or asphalt where it allows for the water to infiltrate and hence, when you mention maintenance, yeah. And they actually have, and articles I was quickly reading over the last few days, almost these vacuum trucks. So again, for larger developments, it could work. It definitely requires that. For something as simple, for a single-family detached residential, there's different options they could use such as the GeoGrid. And again, these have been around for decades where you have space for grass seed and then also, you know, allow for it and at least have a semi, you know, durable surface for it. So there's definitely ways to go around it. You bring up a good point in terms of maintenance. Do we, as a city, then require that somewhere as agreements? And how would we do it? How would we inspect it? It's, it's all that related thing? Or is it considered just good practice by the landlord of like a large shopping center just to maintain it? So I really don't have a quick answer for that, but that's something. Trying to think, if I would get involved in that sort of level of detail or, you know, granularity for that zoning ordinance, or is this something we take a step and just allow for it and then see how it goes? Are there any issues? Because ultimately, if it's not working, it's more on the burden of the landowner. The city, in terms of contextual, in terms of how we regulate it, we do not have our own separate stormwater management ordinance. So that's the enforcement stick.
Yeah. Because if it gets a sinkhole on their property, then they're going to have to deal with it.
Exactly, yeah. So, and I, I don't know the topographer, I don't think you guys have, or at least we have in Norwood, a lot of issues for sinkholes. I don't think, I don't know.
I, I don't know.
Yeah. Where I came from Pennsylvania, it was definitely, and that's where the engineers, a lot of these projects had the, always the immediate response, well, you can't force us because we're now creating a liability. So then the reverse game was the planners and the engineers were fine, do a study first because sometimes it's scattered or whatever. And then if you're not in that area between a municipality and the state, we could get more heavy-handed for pushing that. But in areas where you don't have to worry about it, it works. It could also be expensive. I know around, at least where I live in northern Kentucky, you know, within about, I don't know, eight to 12 inches, you hit very strong clay.
Yeah.
So you almost have to excavate that out first, so.
Definitely have that here too.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's pretty clay-y.
Yeah.
But like I said, until I get into it and develop something and then pass it through the Planning Commission, I really won't know. You know, I'd like to believe without too much effort, we could craft something because, you know, hundreds of thousands of municipalities have been doing this for the last, you know, 20 or so years, so.
That'd be good. So would you, so I, I know that would go through the Planning Commission. Would you be able to share with us after you've drafted a thing for us, just to, just for our edification?
Yeah, definitely. What I could do, usually about a week before the Planning Commission meeting, I'll give the information to Carrie Towne, the administrator for the Building Department. She circulates, so I see no problem in terms of including you guys as well.
That'd be awesome.
Or again, also attending the meetings are important too because that's where everyone's there and we can get a nice, robust discussion about, you know, pros and cons and stuff, so.
I'm unable to make the April, it's April the 6th, I believe?
Yeah.
The next planning. I'm going my calendar. April the 6th at 3:30.
Okay.
And I can't make it, so, no, you can't make it either.
I'd have to leave work.
Yeah.
I should be able to swing it.
Okay.
Twist my arm and leave work.
I'm just, I would love to see us be able to do something that is eco-friendly, attractive-
Help with the stormwater.
Help with, right, help with the storm stuff, reduce some hotspots. I think there's a lot of ways we can make it be good. And I know when I was watching the Planning Commission meeting from yesterday online, it used to be that people were doing, just dumping the gravel as a cheap fix.
Correct.
And that is not what this is.
Correct.
These are, these are engineered, and maybe that's the important word, engineered to be a porous surface. So it would not be the, the sloppy thing that, that I think some people might have in their, in their minds. So I just want to make that, that clear that, I'll see if I can try to include this in the minutes so people can see that these are actually very attractive options and probably pretty expensive looking at it as well. Awesome. So there's really nothing for us to do with this except to know that this is coming down the pike and, and I'm hopeful that, that we can make that, that work. Anything else with the porous materials? Nope?
I don't think so.
All right, we're just zipping right through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And then last on this agenda is the Xavier Student Housing, which has been a pet project of Candace and I. Candace has done some really exciting things and I'd love for you just to share what's happening on sort of, I love what Kevin Finn said about the carrot and the stick.
Yes.
And we, when we're talking about some of the challenges with the Xavier Student Housing, some of our Xavier students are amazing, respectful, fantastic neighbors, adore them. Some of them are not. Some of them leave beer cans and all sorts of litter and garbage and are not always respectful of the community. So that's what we're talking about are those, the nuisance issues. And what we're, we're hoping to do is a multi-pronged approach, which is improve the community relationship with our Xavier neighbors and then also increase enforcement of some of the, the problems. So why don't you share the, the happy stuff?
Yeah. So we've been working on this for a little over a year and we've had some headway with the Student Government Association at Xavier, which I'm super excited about. They are currently in the workings to create a paid position for a student who would be the ambassador, kind of to an extent, for Norwood residents and specifically Xavier students living off-campus in Norwood. And so they're trying to create this paid position. We had a meeting about it a couple of months ago and, you know, they're working on the, the finality of it. So our goal there- know, they're working on the, the finality of it. Um, so our goal there, and it's still, we're still trying to figure out what's gonna work and what's not. Um, I really like the approach we've taken there because we do want to kind of have that student ambassador, and then also possibly any Norwood residents who live around Xavier housing that'd like to be like a block captain maybe to an extent. So we kind of have those people who can communicate with each other, they have contact information. Um, you know, we've heard some great stories of, "Hey, my, um, Xavier students next to us were sick, so I brought them some soup." Or, um, some Xavier students had a party and the next day they brought donuts to the family, you know, kind of building those relationships, uh, I think are really important because we've seen that disconnect between Norwood residents and then the Xavier students. So, um, other ideas that have come from that are like a block party on the months where students move in. So I think it was August and June, maybe? I forget the month, but...
I think it's May.
May, yeah, May and August. Um, so having like a block party on neutral ground, Xavier Police Department had offered a, a possibility of doing it, um, in their parking lot, or maybe the green space on Lawson Way, where we're just bringing in residents and students together, meeting each other. Um, there's been discussions, they have, Xavier kind of has, it's called like the path through Xavier of, that might not be the right wording, but like every year, they're required to do certain things as a freshman, as a sophomore, as a junior. Um, so there's been discussion there of incorporating some way to tell a story, um, turn in, you know, a, uh, something to a teacher. Um, one thing that is coming is, uh, we, they are gonna be doing kind of a orientation. Would you call that? That...
Yeah, I'm not sure how I would describe that.
Um, so that's something that they're doing, we're trying to think big picture with that, too, of like meeting administration at Norwood City Council, um, going to our schools, checking out our schools, checking out the rec center, really like putting a face on the community, um, you know, bringing them to council, come, you know, be nice, we're, we're friendly. Um, so again, these are just all ideas. We're really trying to make that connection. Um, Xavier's a wonderful university, a great resource, so we really want to, um, utilize them and really build that relationship and create something that's long-term. So no matter who's on council, no matter who's, um, the dean at Xavier, or who is the president of student government at Xavier, this, these, um, communications, you know, whatever we decide to do, block party or orientation, they continue to happen year after year, uh, because every year we have new students. And so I think it's really important to create something that's concrete and long-term. So in the works, I'm trying to figure that out. Um, we would love to hear from any residents, too. If you have ideas, thoughts, stories, please reach out. Um, and if you're interested in joining that efforts, then, yeah, please contact, um, Susan Rye. And so that's the long slash short of some ideas that we've been doing to, um, build that relationship.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, the other piece, and I wish I had it pulled up, um, and this is more on the, on the stick end of things, uh, and I'll speak specifically about the, the litter, um, the excess of beer cans. And if you go down Cleney, uh, right now, it would make you want to cry. It's just...
Yeah, end of Hudson, too.
Yeah, the end of Hudson. It's, it's just really, really ridiculous. Um, and I know in some of our meetings, some of the challenges that students had shared or that we've noticed was they have the little teeny red, um, recycling bins, and they need the big wheeled one. Uh, now, the big wheeled one, they can get for free through Rumpkey. The big garbage can, the landlord would have to get. So, um, that's, I think, some information that we need to make sure that the students know, um, because sometimes some of the challenge is they just don't have enough space to put the stuff, and then it blows down the street.
And, and following up with the landlords, too, because some of the houses I've noticed, it's just like a circle trash can you buy.
Mm-hmm.
It's not even like legit, and then it doesn't have a lid on it, and so then trash is blowing everywhere. I mean, the Rumpkey guys, they literally said they have to sweep Cleney to, to get the trash if they, if they have time.
The landlords can get the recycle bins for free as well?
The landlords can as well.
The green ones.
But some of the landlords aren't as, um, you know, they might not live, yeah.
Got it.
They might not know that it's, it's, that's an issue.
But, yeah, there's definitely some houses that...
Yeah. Um, so, uh, there's been some, um, sort of fits and starts with, uh, trying to enforce a little more firmly because having litter in your front yard is against, um, um, actually, it's against the health department, and both the health department and the police department, um, have the, um, ability to cite. Um, Jim Shelby with our health department, great guy, he is, um, very much of a, "Hey, guys, let's clean up our garbage" kind of an attitude, not a, um, you know...
Here's a citation.
Yeah, he's not, he's not coming in hot and heavy on, on day one. Um, and I like that approach, um, but it seems like that approach has not been getting us the, the outcome that we're, that we're, we're needing. So we're actually gonna be having a meeting, um, myself, I don't know if you're able to come?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Um, uh, but with the health department, the police, and the building department to just figure out how can we m- make sure that the, the, the students as well as the landlords know that this is an issue and that it needs to be dealt with. Um, I think another challenge is gonna be, um, this is then sort of the next piece, is the, the, um, the beer dye tables. There used to be beer pong, now the big game is beer dye.
Oh.
For those of you, I'm, I'm hip on these things. Um, I can't play, but I, I know of it. Um, and I, I've done a little research, and, um, there's not any, there, there's not good, um, I've not found a community that has good legislation on that. Uh, I know that in Fort Collins, they looked at having an ordinance against having those tables in the front yard, um, but then it just sort of, they did more of, let's have more community discussions, and it sort of disappeared. Um, that has happened in a couple communities where it kind of came up and then it disappeared. Um, I know one community in New Jersey, um, they actually outlawed drinking in the front, like anywhere visible from the street.
Mm-hmm.
That feels a little...
Report to people here.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Like, I'm not sure that the, I don't think that that's the direction we want to go.
Yeah.
Um, but I do know that that's how some, one community dealt with that issue. Um, again, I'm not a fan of that, but, uh, um, that is something, if people have ideas or thoughts, love to hear them. Um, there's been some discussion, if we have a time limit for how long a table could be out there, do we have a policy on how big the table is, how tall the table is, where it's situated, that it has to be in the backyard. So there are some things we could do, um, but we do want to be respectful. You know, one of my thoughts was especially during the pandemic, when people needed to socialize outside.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, if you're, you know, a group and you want to have a, a nice fancy dinner in your front yard with your friends and family, like, that shouldn't be illegal.
Yeah.
Um...
But I'm thinking like some apartments don't have, like, decent backyards either, or like any green space, but a front yard.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we don't want to be...
I'm iffy on legislating tables.
Yeah, nothing's happening here.
Yeah, it's important to, to make sure it doesn't impact everyone on the whole scale.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, we, we will follow back up with this as we get more information. Um, so this will stay in the committee, uh, but these are some conversations that are, that are being had. Anyone, do you want to add anything? Do you want to play beer dye?
I've never heard of that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a beer ponger. I wasn't very good at beer pong in college, but...
Then you probably would not be good at beer dye either. Um, and then the last item was, um, to address council, and we don't have anyone here left. So I guess we are good. Um, should we go ahead and schedule another meeting while we're all sitting here?
Sure.
For like, maybe after Mike's April meeting, well, not Mike's meeting, but the meeting in April?
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
And then we can do some more follow-up with Xavier, too.
Sorry, day of the week. I know John wasn't able to be here with a family issue. Um, does anyone know if Thursdays typically are good for him? We could do it the seventh, the day after the planning meeting.
I'm fine with that. I'm pretty happy with that.
That works for me.
That work for you? Okay, so let's say seven o'clock or six?
Whatever.
Any time works.
Yeah, I can do either.
I would say six.
We can do six.
Let's do six. Six o'clock on Thursday, the seventh. I will be sure to make sure that also gets in the council minutes, and we will call the committee to a close. Thank you so much, everybody.